I remember that. We were all achy and sore, too. I had Lyme in second grade where it was really prevalent or well-known and the doctors told my parents I had spinal meningitis. They completely misdiagnosed me. A nurse suggested a Lyme test before they started treating me for spinal meningitis. It's amazing.
Spinal meningitis?
Yeah. Call to order. We're good, seven o'clock? Ready?
Ready to be in order.
Let's pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with which we are just.
Anybody have agenda changes?
Did you add the two items on the bike fed committee?
No, that's what you're doing now.
Two little bitty things.
Yeah.
So I would like to add two little bitty things about the bike.
Here, microphone.
I would like to add two little bitty things about the bike.
And Mayor, the DPW has asked permission, is asking the board to grant permission itself to give us. The memo is at the table for you.
Yeah, memo's here.
And he'll retroactively accept the resignation of Dave Hackenmull from the ZPA.
Okay, so we're gonna add those items to the agenda.
Please.
You can just add them at the end?
All right.
So any other additions, changes? Otherwise I'd make a motion to accept the agenda?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Announcements? I was gonna provide some update about fire hydrants. When we were here last week, we were discussing the fact that there were four fire hydrants in the village that were offline. Two of them had serious mechanical problems that would require some significant expense. One was located at the corner of Henry W. and Prospect. And then the other expensive proposition was down on Huguenutt Street closer to Town and Country. And then there were two that were hopefully near-term fixes. One of them was up at the top of Lincoln and South Mannheim. We have good news, that is now fixed and fully operative. And the fourth of the ones that we were discussing last week is at the bottom of Lookout here. And the DPW gentlemen have been working on that. Actually, I was with them this morning and they continue to have that taken apart and looking at a variety of pieces related to that fire hydrant to try to figure out where the problem is. There was also a fire in New Paltz on North Chestnut yesterday. So during that fire, that hydrant was damaged and that hydrant is now being repaired by the DPW. And I spoke with the deputy superintendent of DPW this morning about what he viewed as the worst-case scenario for getting that hydrant back online. He said it would be next week. So I think that repair is similar to the repair that was done to the hydrant up at the top of Lincoln. So that's kind of the fire hydrant update right now. We continue to have.
So just to clarify, the hydrant on North Chestnut was damaged during the fire?
Yes. So it was, it was, it actually was fine during the flushing that took place yesterday, or I'm sorry, last week. Or I believe it was, it was fine during that period. And it was described to me by the deputy superintendent that when they flush, they open up the valve, but they don't do it as quickly as possible. In a fire-like situation, and this is similar to what happened to the hydrant near STS back in January, that that's when, you know, something like, there could be a mechanical issue. But even when I was discussing with the deputy superintendent Nick, he was saying that the cap that came off the hydrant near STS was a pretty simple fix. That's not a problematic, frustrating mechanical situation. So that's the hydrant update.
Are there plans to, I know you mentioned a couple of them are expensive, are there plans to work on those as well during the course of this budget?
The thinking right now with those two expensive hydrants, which would be north of $10,000 each to repair, because it's not just the hydrant, there's some additional plumbing below ground that needs to be dealt with to fix those situations. So that's gonna be preliminary discussions with Blue and Nancy, that's gonna be looked at to be included in the upcoming budget.
Would we be able to make, use contingency monies that we have in this year's budget to address that?
We can definitely investigate that.
Okay. I think we need to.
Okay.
And just to continue on with that, the last time I met with Nancy, she did mention some potential grants that we could apply for that could be used for permanent equipment such as fire hydrants. So I'll try to get more information from her, but you know, I think if we were able to do that, then we could look to get them all to be the same type of hydrants. Because I know we have two different types in the village, which they all work, it's just that one is newer than the other, so.
Right, when you talk about the two different types, though, so we have, we have north of 140 total fire hydrants. So we have eight that are of the smaller variety that require an adapter to be used. And one thing I was thinking of, I'm actually meeting with a person who's interested in doing some research regarding a village-related project, and I thought this might be a great research project for a SUNY student. We can look at how often we have repaired different hydrants, what the costs of those repairs are, to really try to get a better sense of repair versus buying new. And how often do you have to repair older hydrants? Would there be savings if we had newer hydrants that required less ongoing maintenance? So I think that could be something we could look at, our historical track record of hydrants and what work has been done, to which hydrants, when. So that might be a report that we'll find useful, especially as we look at where to spend money.
Okay.
Okay. Any other announcements? No? Public comment, anyone from the public? Here, oh, you have to come to the mic, or you can take, you can take this one, it's fine. Just as long as you speak into a mic.
And Ellen Rocco, and I'm here because I'm on the agenda, it's a very lovely suggestion by Don Kerr about naming, perhaps naming a street or a way or something for Maurice White. Maurice and Celia are very good friends of ours, and I'm just wondering if it might be possible to consider a bench with Maurice's name on it, maybe for peace art, instead of a street? I think that would get a lot of.
Thanks, Ellen. Katie, you need to use a mic this morning.
Mayor, that's Mr. Lef, who is item number nine on the agenda. I don't know if you want to talk about it in public com, take his comments in public comment, or wait till the agenda number nine?
Mr. Lef, you have a, you have a, an item that we're planning to discuss regarding your water and sewer bill? If you'd like to comment on it now, so you don't have to sit through our entire agenda, feel free, but you have to use a microphone. There's one right up at the podium there.
We have the property at 52 South Chestnut Street, and I own it about nine years. White priority, mainly for retirement, which is a punishment. And for the last eight and a half years, the water bill, every three months, has been between $200 and $300 total. And last month it spiked to $13,49, and this month it spiked to $3,000. And I say, we had pretty much the same tenants all the time, I mean, they're not ruffians, they're not dummies. And no students there at all right now. We live in a shared apartment, and there's another man that has, I'm a bitter, I'm a sad guy. And another man that also has a mortgage, and of course, a lot of us have all. And it's just something that, in the end, unusual, I keep $3,000 worth of water, I could throw the whole building down the street. So, and I spoke to a very nice gentleman.
John, most likely.
And he was there, and he explained just how I do it, everything he wants, you know, outside the house, he can handle that. And I agree with him, and everything he said was very true, and I'm really, John, so, I'm very, very excited, I'm a detective, of course. But I think, sir, that there must be something wrong, that eight and a half years of water going to me, constantly, consistently. I mean, if a toilet was running, it would have to be running 24 hours a day for a month in order to use that much water. And as I say, the tenants are real hard, they're not dummies, they've lived their whole life, and I am a public manager, that would, they call it a copy, they do a lot of time, they take care of this. This is just my life, and I just am asking for some relief upon this all bill, and I'm also, I have a handyman that does work for my apartments. He, there were a couple of small leaks, of course, and showers, but she thinks, I can, I would love to call you, or somebody, and ask if I should bring her here tonight, testify, ask her what he did. But I decide we won't get that, because, whatever, I really can't afford it, and there must be something technical at all, just couldn't use that much water. I have other, and other apartments, and I'm near to this, I'm near to this, I need some other kind of insurance. And I'm asking something, or from this bill, in some way, not asking, not regaling, or thinking, I'm asking something from this bill, and if that can be worked out, then I would have some kind of payment on that. The most important thing is, that I don't have a problem with having water turned off, because I'm attempting to solve the problem, and I know that it's not because of a heated, heating pump in any way, I know that. And having it for a non-tendering period, and that's why I'm here, I've been in New Paltz for a long time, and we're celebrating my 40th wedding anniversary on Saturday, and we're gonna carry it forward for a lifetime.
Thank you, Mr. Lef. Thank you. Okay, assuming there's no other public comments, I'm gonna close public comments. And move to our business agenda. You guys wanna move item number nine to the top here?
Sure.
So we can discuss this topic?
Did you have another?
Oh.
Is that one in your office?
There were none.
Okay, I'm gonna double check.
Actually, there aren't, are the bills in the agenda?
Yes.
Sorry?
There aren't any.
It's my, it's my mistake, I left it on for my conversation, so there aren't any.
Okay, that's, that's.
We were gonna discuss your item now.
Oh, okay, oh, all right, fine, fine.
So we're, so we're gonna remove item number one from the agenda altogether? Okay, we're moving the discussion of a request for consideration from Mr. Lef at 52 South Chestnut regarding his water and sewer building, so we're gonna discuss that now. Does anybody wanna comment, or should I comment first?
Would you?
Sure. We completely understand what has happened. This, this happens periodically to different property owners. It's actually happened to myself, where there's more water usage than I expected. And I think we're fortunate that we have a proactive public works department, particularly John, who does our water bills. And when he identifies someone who's using more water than, than they do historically, he tries to alert the property owner as soon as possible. Unfortunately, there's not a lot that, that we can do about this, because this is water that has been used. It's, you know, often a leaky toilet, but not a leaky toilet in the, in the one that just continues to run. It's generally a toilet that you cannot hear, and that's often the culprit many times in terms of this outsized water usage. What we have done for other property owners who are looking for some sort of consideration is provide them with a payment plan. I know most recently we considered a six-month payment plan to spread out some of this outsized water usage that you've endured. And hopefully your handyman has identified some of the leaks to get your, your usage back to what it had been historically. But generally, that's how we approach this type of request. Does anyone else want to add anything?
And the DPW has verified that it's not an issue with the line to water the empty house?
Yes, that's, that's my understanding.
Can I add one question, sir?
Yes, sure, but do you mind just, or you can ask it, I'll repeat your question, go ahead.
Okay. I don't wanna be as far, is there any kind of appeal process, and I can go with, is anyone to pick?
I don't believe there's an appeal process. I mean, part of the problem is, or part of our challenge is that this is, you know, essentially what you'd be asking for is relief that the rest of our community would be responsible for paying for. You know, that, that's the challenge with this, is we all use the water that we use, we pay for the water that we use. And I understand that you did not intend to use that amount of water, but what happens mechanically on your property is your responsibility. We have to draw the line somewhere, and you know, once the water enters your property, how it is, how it is used and whether there are leaks or not is the property owner's responsibility.
I mean, the, I know John said, I don't know if he said it was a bad new water meter, but could, could that be, could that be the fact? I've spoken to a lot of people about this, and I'm glad that it's important, possibly, without anybody knowing, the tenants there are the same, and they're regular people.
So to repeat Mr. Lef's question, he was asking if we could confirm whether this was a faulty water meter. And I think as you were relaying from your conversation with John, that the water meters that are, that have been installed on village properties are relatively new. Those installations were done in the last few years. We don't, we don't believe that the water meter is of issue, and I think if, you know, John's pretty thorough about keeping track of what has been used and whether it makes sense, and just also double checking to make sure that the meters are functioning correctly.
May I just say, in partial response to your question, the way it was phrased, you might have been thinking that the meters are brand-new, that is, that they haven't been tested before. But the meters were not installed during this past month, they've been installed during the past several years. So they're relatively new, and there's, there is a regular check on the functionality of the meters. So if there were something amiss with the meter, we would certainly inform you of that. You would be, you would be notified that there was something wrong. If there is no reason to think that there's, that the meter is malfunctioning, then the issue is exactly what the mayor referred to. The water has been used, somebody's going to pay for that water in exactly the amount that we're talking about, because the water is paid for by its use.
Well, yes, sir, because of the previous bill, which was spiked to $13,49.
Yes.
And this recent bill, about $15,000, and there was a trend going on there.
Yes. I mean, I understand.
So I just wanna repeat that Mr. Lef feels that he's identified a trend because the bills have increased, right? That is your, that's your, your feeling about, your bill had been at a certain level, and then it jumped up, and then it's jumped up again. I would be concerned that your handyman has not identified where the leak is, and maybe the leak is becoming worse. But what we can do as a board is grant you some, some flexibility in terms of making payments. And I think it'd be, you know, we, we did this recently, where we provided someone with a six-month payment plan, so.
Who would actually do that, sir?
Well, you would see our clerk, but we can make a, we can make a motion as a board tonight to make it very clear that you have six months to make payments. Do you think six months would be, I'm sorry?
No problem with the water being turned off?
No, we do not want your, your water to be turned off. As long as you're making a good faith effort to, to pay your water bill and work towards paying the amount that's been used.
Yes.
I, I don't think our board is going to have any trouble.
Can I make one more suggestion, sir?
Sure.
I'd be willing to bring my handyman in here, testify, if that might, if that might alter the oil situation, if somebody had another meeting, do you think that would help at all?
That wouldn't necessarily help with our board. What we can do is provide you with the flexibility to make payments, but it's really the homeowner's responsibility to identify how your water is being used.
I agree with you, just, generally speaking, it's just a, it's impossible.
I understand, I understand your frustration.
And what could also be happening here is if the leak began halfway through the first billing period, and then was in effect for the entire second billing period, then you would have leaked for a large, more, and you would have been charged more for the second. So your handyman very well may have fixed everything at this point, but because there was a leak for half of a billing period, it went up a certain amount. And then you had a billing period with the entire billing period being a leak, then it would be the larger amount. Certainly feel it's, it's definitely a large bill.
Well, I'll see the clerk and then work on it.
It's the treasurer's department who, but when you, when you visit village halls, Katie is very good with making sure people know where they need to go. So you'll, you'll most likely see Katie as the clerk, but it's the treasurer's department who you make the payment to.
Okay. I can do that immediately right now.
Yes. Donovan?
Yeah, I would hate to see a situation where you get the bills every three months, where a citizen is waiting in fear and trepidation for that next bill to see what it's gonna be. Is it possible we could have the meter read at some point sooner than three months, to see if, let them know sooner if this problem persists, or if this problem's been fixed? That would seem to be something that wouldn't cost, you know, anything.
Yeah, I think so.
We can do that for you as well. We could even have our, our DPW staff to do, even, even a reading, you know, as soon as this, this week, or within the next few days, compared to the, the most recent, you know, maybe we can get a couple of weekly readings to see what kind of usage you have, and if that's on track with what you had paid for historically. So I'll, I'll speak with John and our DPW department about that. So, thanks, thanks very much.
And if there's some other ideas, I'll come to see the truth, or work out a plan.
Yes.
Very good.
Yeah, and the note from the DPW does indicate that they have been doing meter readings, and that they feel that it has gone back to normal. But we can keep on doing the testing, just to make sure.
I appreciate that.
And happy anniversary.
Thank you.
Okay, next discussion topic.
Ask, or they actually, or.
Want a motion?
Or, sorry.
Okay, so I'd like to make a motion that we provide Mr. Lef with the ability to construct a payment plan with our treasurer's department to become whole over the next six months.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, item two, discussion to own or rent in a combined municipal center. So this is the, the ongoing discussion of constructing a municipal center with the town government. That would include offices for town functions, village functions, court, and a police department. So we've spoken with our village attorney, as well as with our village treasurer, about this idea, you know, trying to take a look at what makes the most sense for a village and town relationship in terms of a combined municipal center, what makes the most sense economically. And I posed the question to our village attorney and our treasurer, whether we should consider owning the municipal center property along with the town? Or would it make sense to be a tenant, and which the pros and cons of the different financial arrangements? So I just wanted to open it up for discussion.
No, was, I just have a question. Was this something that came out of your meetings with the committee?
This came out of discussions with my meetings, my discussions with the attorneys, discussions with Councilman Marty Erwin, just trying to look at a variety of approaches to how this should be handled.
And I saw the memo from Nancy and Will, co-author, was there a memo from Dave Merzik as well?
No, I had asked Dave Merzik, just because during one conversation, since Dave Merzik is our water sewer attorney, I just asked him generally what he thought about this. He, he provided an opinion to me, and then I had asked him to write it up formally, but he said he was not comfortable doing that, because he's retained by the village to be our water and sewer attorney, so he didn't wanna opine on a completely different topic. But I think a key takeaway for me is that this relationship between the town and the village governments in terms of ownership, I think it's also very important to be aware of. As village residents and taxpayers, we are also town residents and taxpayers, so by default, we. As village residents and taxpayers, we are also town residents and taxpayers, so by default we are on the deed of the, that is an asset that is owned by village residents regardless of whether we're renting or co-owning.
I, I'm sorry, I just, I'm questioning only because I just, obviously I haven't been to the committee meetings, but it just seemed to me to be a little premature to be getting this opinion and I'm also just not knowing that, that our attorney was being asked also because we have exceeded our retainer. So I just don't know how much is going into this that we're not all aware of, if that makes any sense.
I think it's, it's imperative that we understand how we should move forward, whether we're renting or owning. That's, that's an important decision that we need to make in terms of, in terms of this project.
I think it's a very difficult decision to make without knowing what the cost of the project is going to be. While there's rough estimates, there's also been promises of money coming through the pipes to help us along with this if we're willing to work together. So do we know what type of money, how much, what type of, what restrictions might be tied into that?
I can, I can provide some update on that. We have actually had some update in terms of the possibility of local government efficiency grants if we're, we're doing this with the town and the village and, and also some nicterda incentives. But the thinking all along was we need to be looking at this in kind of a worst-case scenario lens if no money is granted at all. And unfortunately, it seems like the money that we could get from, from an LGE grant or even via a nicterda, it's really, those are really not material amounts of money. I think the, the gentleman that was spoken to regarding LGE opportunities was saying something like, maybe the town and the village could each pursue a CFA and be awarded something like $200,000 each. So you're talking about a $400,000 help for this project and at 300,000, I'm sorry, at $300 per square foot for a 25,000 square foot building. You know, this is a sizable multimillion dollar building, so the, the financial assistance from the state doesn't, at least at first glance, appear to be significant.
Well, I think-
Don, you want to grab that mic over there?
Sure.
You are.
Thank you for coming in.
Enjoy your anniversary. I, as I interpret what I'm hearing from Dennis and Rebecca, you know, I just did this earlier privately, in a, in a private meeting. This is, this is a change. This hasn't been what we've been speaking about as we consider this project. And when the town and the village had the discussion about whether to go ahead with a joint project, at that time in that discussion, things may have changed from this point, the discussion was, you know, full and equal partners, 50/50 owners. And I, I think that was the basis upon which that vote of the joint town and village was taken. So I think that the question that I'm hearing is what has, what has changed since then that we're now talking about this sort of arrangement as opposed to the original concept? I, I, I think I-
What, what do you, what do you view as 50/50 partners? Like, so we're talking about a town-run court, a town-run police department. This project would be paid for out of the town's A fund that both town and village residents contribute into, so.
Well, I think the specific discussion at that meeting, there was a member of the, a lay member, an unelected member of the building committee, proposed and suggested that the ownership of the project be proportional to the space. If the village had 25% of the space, the village should have 25% of the ownership. And the consensus that emerged in disagreement with that suggestion was that we should be full partners. And I think, I think that was the basis upon which we collectively moved forward, so I, I-
Well, I think we still have that because the idea is that we would be full partners in terms of decision-making. We would work collaboratively to identify an architect, we would work collaboratively to identify how the, the building would be fueled, we'd work collaboratively to determine, you know, what the building would look like, how it would function. I mean, that, that's my understanding of, of working collaboratively.
But at the end of the day, we would be a tenant with a lease.
Right.
And at the end of that lease, what would happen?
At the end of the, the lease, you would have, you could structure the lease so it's, you write a first refusal to, to renew.
Right.
You could move out or, we're talking about like the length of the-
We need to protect the town as well, not just, because as you say, we're paying taxes to the town and it's coming out of the A fund. And the idea that, oh, well, it's great, you can be a tenant because then after 20 years, if you want to leave, you can leave, but then we're leaving them in the lurch. And I can't imagine that a municipal center is going to be able to find easy tenants to move into meeting rooms that we would be vacating. So I would like to have some sort of agreement that would be bulletproof that we would never be caught in a situation where we're negotiating with the town for a new lease at the end of 10, 20, or 30 years. I would like for it to be bulletproof that we can't leave them hanging without a tenant and they can't leave us without a home. There are too many things that get negotiated between the town and the village and that would just be too large of a negotiating block in their pocket.
And I think that's why our treasurer was suggesting that by leasing, you're actually making that arrangement not as complicated because currently the town owns the Veterans Drive site, so the, the town would continue to own that Veterans Drive site. You wouldn't have to create some new structure or a new agreement that splits the, the ownership of that property. You know, this is, this was suggested to us by our treasurer and our attorney to be a tenant. This is not, you know, I, I feel like, Don, Dennis, you're, you're making it seem like this is my agenda that, like, I'm really unclear as to what, what exactly is going on here.
Nobody said that, but I did speak to the treasurer yesterday.
Yeah, but you, right, so you read her, you know, and you spoke to the treasurer and what did she say?
She said that she thinks it's premature for us to make a decision until we know what the final cost of the project is going to be and we know how much money is coming through the pipes.
And, and I've subsequently spoken with her and explained to her and relayed to her that we don't have significant grant money to be expected, you know, that the early reads on what kind of grant money we can expect is limited. And she said, well, if that's the case, this is, this is the route that you take. And we do have very solid estimates in terms of how much a project like this will cost. Both architects have identified a cost of $300 per square foot to construct a building like this. And then it's plus or minus how large the building would be, but it's roughly about 25,000 square feet. And you have to start somewhere, you have to start with estimates and you have to identify what that relationship is going to be like between the town and the village. Or else? How would we ever know how much the project's going to cost until we engage an architect? Unless we've agreed to hire an architect, we have to look at these things.
Right.
But I, I don't know, I think it's possible to work collaboratively, but when you have a tenant and a landlord or a lessy and a lessor relationship, that is not equal partners by definition. It's just, I, it's, and I, I think if the issue is looking for grant money, the entity which is much more, much better suited to get larger amounts of grant money would be the village in many instances. But because of our, our low census, our low earnings rate, we're, we're a poor, poor community and eligible for more grants than the town. So I, I just, until we know more and have more data, I don't know-
No, but I, I think you're confusing grant money with ability to borrow money at a lower rate. And in our, our meeting that we just had, the building committee that consists of yourself, myself, Marty Erwin, and Dan Torres, we were all fine with the idea if, if it was really obvious that the village could borrow at, and I'm making this up, at 1% and the town could borrow at 1 and 3/4% then you just structure it differently so that the village is, is borrowing. But, you know, if that's, if that's really the direction that we need to go in, then we can just go in that direction. But it's cleaner, and this is what Attorney Merzick said, what Attorney Frank said, it is cleaner to have one owner, one municipality on the deed, not multiple, not two municipalities borrowing, not two. You know, what you're just, you're describing a situation now where the village is borrowing the money and then Dennis was just saying, well, we have to also be mindful of the town and can't leave them in the lurch either. I mean, what we're trying to do is to identify something that, that, that makes sense and we need, renting makes more sense than having two municipalities on the deed. And that's been the advice of the town and the village.
Yes, would you summarize as the pertinent points that our attorney, I'm thinking of Will Frank, has made relevant to the points that are being raised now? Are there, are there points that he has included in his memo that are directly relevant to the points of discussion now? That is the tenant-owner relationship? Do I have it here too? Do you want it?
Sure, I mean, maybe you can take a look at it, Tom.
Well, I mean, I just would-
I, I don't have, I don't have, I don't have Will's points memorized, no.
Okay. Nor do I. But I know, I know that he made points.
I can pull up Will's email.
And I, I do understand the distinction between bonding and grants. Specifically, what we were discussing was the possibility of grants to offset this building project, so that's why I was speaking in terms of grants. I do recall the conversation about borrowing, which is a, a different issue, which, which would be lead agency if the village gets a better rate.
Yeah.
Yeah, then other than that, the discussion, being at the village board, should the village be a tenant? I guess the discussion would be if those were the facts, would the town, would the town be a tenant? So, but, but again, we don't have enough information on what the rates would be to even go there.
But I was, I was, what I'm, I am wondering now whether we can find and summarize this is whether there were any points that were very particularly made about whether the village is disadvantaged by having a tenant relationship with the town in a co-location. Are we in fact disadvantaged or not? I mean, I know that there are relationships across New York State where municipalities cohabitate spaces. There must be every single kind of relationship that we can think of, given that there are some, what, there are 32 counties, there must be 350 municipalities of one sort or another, and many of them co-locate. We have some that co-locate within about eight or nine miles of here. Every relation, I'm assuming, are there disadvantages to the lessors in those relationships?
Yeah, I think it might make some sense to, to speak with some of those communities that have towns and villages that cohabitate and see what, you know, what their experiences or suggestions might be. We haven't done this before.
Right, I, I mean, I, I'm really unclear as to why we're second guessing our treasurer and our attorney right now.
We're not.
We're, I don't think we are.
We're not? Because they advised us to look at this as the, the village being a renter.
But, but Tim, we're not robots. They weren't-
Okay, so we're not robots, so-
Please, no, no, I'm, I'm, maybe I chose the wrong words. They can advise, but they weren't at the joint meeting where we as a, as a, in collaboration with the town board, had a sense of something else. They weren't in those chairs and they didn't say those words. We did. And I'm just trying to, I'm trying to reconcile where I understood we were several weeks ago and, and this conversation now. It's not, not second guessing anything. I, I'm, you know, I was at, at the joint meeting and I said what I said and heard what I heard and I just want to reconcile that with, with this whole discussion.
Okay, so I'm, I'm at a loss now what we're supposed to do.
You were looking through the email for anything that refuted-
Yeah, I can't find it.
-the concept that it would be a bad idea to be the tenant.
Well, it's, it's a confidential memo from attorney, so I don't feel like I want to read it in a board meeting.
I don't mind reading it. Benefits of ownership, the village would be in equal control position to the town. Even the best landlords can be a problem if the village had joint ownership of the facility. The village board would have the ability to control some of the expenses and operational decisions such as contracted services, maintenance schedules, landscaping matters. Monthly rent payment could be an investment, the money's paid in lease rent would result in building equity in an asset if ownership was selected. So I think that's related to Tom's question.
Yeah, that's the plus side.
That's, or that's what you would maybe be forfeiting by being a-
Tenant.
-tenant. So benefits of leasing, capital savings, the significant capital expense would be saved by leasing instead of buying. Such capital funds could be used for other needs and can greatly increase financial flexibility. I mean, that's also been my understanding, like, by not having this additional debt burden on our balance sheet, that keeps our ability to borrow for other projects more fluid. This is now from Nancy and, and Will. Possibility of expansion downsizing. Buying is a commitment, particularly with the joint ownership, the village may need to grow or downsize in terms of personnel. If space requirements change, leasing allows for a great deal of flexibility. Freedom to sublet and move to another location if necessary is also a benefit of leasing. There would be no need to go through the difficulties of selling the property before moving to another location, provided that the lease had appropriate termination language.
But again, that goes to my point of leaving the town in the lurch if we're going to terminate. And honestly, under what condition are we going to say, hey, let's just leave and go build ourselves a new village hall after we've already moved into a municipal center?
Right. I, I think he included that, or Nancy and Will included that because they're just trying to leave all stern stones unturned. Yes, that would be considered a benefit and a possible risk for the town, but I think the town is also mindful of that risk and would be entering into this agreement mindful of that risk themselves. So full-service lease. If there is cleaning and maintenance crew that empties the trash, replaces light bulbs, maintains the bathroom, this can be factored into the rent as a fixed annual cost, which makes leasing a good option. Personnel savings. Under a lease scenario, there is no need to assign personnel to oversee property issues that the town should oversee. That might very well result in a reduction in the budget, in the buildings and grounds funding requirements in the village's annual budgets. Recommendation, it is our joint opinion that if a long-term lease with a 10-year term and two five-year tenant renewal options can be negotiated at acceptable rental and common charge levels along with the village's ability to terminate the lease on reasonable notice with a nominal buyout termination penalty, it would be preferable to enter into such a lease with the town versus joint ownership of a municipal facility. So that's the end of their one and a half page memo.
Thank you.
So I think what we're trying to do as a, as a village and a town, who are looking at a project to build together, is to explore the options that make the most sense with the information that we have at this time. And it is my understanding that it makes more sense to lease versus own for the village. It provides us with just more flexibility.
Can I ask whether you would consider a, a longer-term lease as, at least as desirable, if not more desirable? I don't know why a 10-year lease would be the most desirable.
My, my thinking was that you attach the length of the lease to the length of the bond term. I think that's, that would make sense for the town in terms of their ability to borrow. They could say, look, we have a lease, we have a tenant, that makes their ability to borrow and probably the rate that they would secure a little bit more favorable. I think Will likes the error on the side of being conservative, and that's why he was suggesting a ten-year lease with five-year options, as opposed to just a straight-up thirty-year lease. As an attorney, he seems to advise us to be conservative when we, when we can be. But Will was also talking about the idea that any sort of plus-ten-year lease term is a material amount of time, so if there were local government efficiency grants to be had, it would be seen as, as, as obvious that the town and the village are working collaboratively and that this is not just a short-term arrangement. So if there is an LGE grant, that we should be eligible for it because we're clearly working together.
Now, you stated it's cleaner to have one owner instead of two. Can you just expand upon the concept of cleaner? And why that's so desirable?
For exactly the reason that every single IMA is, is a challenge. You know, the more specialty items that need to be negotiated and worked on is more expense for the village. I think there's going to be plenty of stuff in a project like this to negotiate and to involve attorneys on. So if the ownership piece is cleaner, that's just one less thing that we're, we're spending money on and we're potentially haggling over.
What about the potential of a lease that is equal to the length of the bond, that is not a straight rental agreement, but rather a rent-to-own, that at the end of the bond agreement, we would have a vested interest of ownership equal to the amount of space in the building that we occupy? That way, it would be cleaner during the bonding process. At the end of the bonding process, we would have our vested interest in the building, and we wouldn't have to worry about negotiating with them at the end of the lease.
And we're building equity.
Correct.
That seems like something that's worth investigating.
I think that's worth investigating.
That would appease my concerns.
Yeah.
I think...
So on the, on the, we would front-load the negotiation with less challenging stuff, and then we would be working towards building equity. So I see that as a way to still achieve this idea of, have a cleaner arrangement to start off with. Sorry, Don, I interrupted you.
That's just like, that's just good to crystallize where we were in the discussion. So I, I like that suggestion as well, Dennis. I guess my, my, my bottom line from my view of my fiduciary responsibility as a trustee today, as a trustee, I own land, I own a building, and at the end of a rental situation, at the end of the lease, I would not own land and not own a building under the original scenario. And that's, that's just not acceptable to me, to go from a, a situation of ownership to come out at the end a situation not ownership. I don't think that's, you know, financially ideal. I would like to take a look at, I would like to reach out and see if there are, Dennis has put out an option that I think is a, is a, is a good one and a creative one, and I, I like. I would like to speak to some other joint municipalities and see what other models there are. I, I, you know, I don't think it's, it's either, you know, either we own equally or we're a tenant are the only options. I don't know what the other options are. Dennis has identified one, 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 one other possibility. But this is a, a big deal, and I, if we can expedite in a, in a, in a matter of maybe weeks before the next meeting or the meeting after that, rather than months or years, and at least, you know, make some phone calls and find out what the other models are, I think that would allow us to make a better decision. I think we've made a lot of progress tonight.
Do you want to take it upon yourself to report back with two examples of, of, you know, such, such marriages and their pros and cons?
I will, I will volunteer to find one.
Tom has volunteered to find one?
I'll find one.
You find one, okay. So we have two.
If we're still on this topic, there was something I wanted to revisit that I brought up at the joint meeting, and during that meeting, I asked if there had been a OSHA-type of study of the current Town Hall building, mainly just something that's on paper, that's an official document by an official agency, that essentially would state that it is a condemned building. I think it's important for us to have that place, not just for ourselves as boards, but also for the public to know, the employees to know, and also, I would just imagine that there could be potential for additional funding based on the fact that it is an emergency situation and that we've had to find temporary means to house our employees. So I don't know if that's something that the committee could...
What do you think, Don? You got to come up, come up, use my...
I, I do believe that the previous village board had asked about any studies relevant to the state of the building before we ever actually talked about a joint municipal project, and I think that the assistants of the supervisor made that available, and it's also available on our town website as well.
Oh, it is? Okay, good, great. Okay, thank you.
Okay, so I'm gonna investigate this renting with the building equity option, as Dennis suggested, and Don and Tom are each gonna try to find examples of other municipal center marriages between municipalities. Anybody else want to do anything related to this project?
I'm gonna look up the, the report on, on Town Hall and share it with everyone.
We're good, move on to the next topic?
Yeah.
Okay, so Don and Tom are going to comment on working with downtown private property owners and their interest in leasing space to the village to provide parking.
Actually, my ideal is not that they would lease space to the village, but that we would work with them to find ways to coalesce contiguous properties and achieve efficiencies by having contiguous properties work together to provide more parking than can be achieved by each of them in their own property. And I used the example in discussion with the mayor before of the space between Chase and the China House, where there is a slight slope, and right now, it is divided by an ordinary barrier that you would see along any highway, for example. But if you take the two spaces and have them designed, I believe you could achieve significantly, well, significant, you could achieve more parking than you can now, given the configuration that exists. There's an additional space on the other side of China House, and I have attempted to contact the owners of that space, and I have not succeeded so far. But I, I now know who they are, and I believe that with a little bit of luck, as the song goes, I would be able to, to contact them. But I think even if we had this as a concept that we were planning into the future, rather than trying to achieve it today, we might be able to effect an arrangement that would look not unlike, and you'll forgive me for this, Reinbeck. You know, people hate to compare New Paulson to Reinbeck, but if you look at Reinbeck, they've somehow been able to put properties together, and in the interiors of a number of blocks, they have parked, they've achieved a considerable amount of parking, which is immediately accessible to their shopping area, even though some of it is invisible from the shopping area. That's what I'm conceiving as a longer-term project.
Do you have any idea how they did that?
I do not. I've never spoken to anybody, but I've been there many, many, I've been there a hundred times and wondered at exactly that. How did they accomplish that?
Woodstock sort of has that, that type of parking style as well, where behind Main Street, you have one long lot that goes from one street to the next, and it runs parallel. And then they also have, their municipal lot also connects to other lots.
Yes.
And, and again, invisible from, from the street.
The mayor has spoken to one of these tenants, and I don't need to mention who, who is, has some interest in pursuing this. I will try to find out if the third of these has interest in pursuing it, and then we'll see if we can marry those. And if, if we could achieve one, that would be good, but I don't think that's the end of the story for us. I think that could be just the beginning for us.
Yeah, I, I kind of like guardrail hop through there after, you know, the topic came up, and there's definitely a lot of unused spaces.
There's a lot of unused space.
You know, most of the China Ha, China House parking lot is vacant.
Yeah.
And, and they could very easily go from one to another. And also, in terms of people looking for a space, you know, if you pull into a full tiny lot without the option of keeping on moving on, you're increasing traffic on your, on your major thoroughfares, but, yeah.
So I would like us to consider this as a longer-term, planful direction to go in, rather than a short-term fix with one spot. But if we could, if we could achieve one, that would be one that we don't have now.
So a couple of the efforts I've made, I had my eye on one unpaved area in the vicinity of Water Street Market, and a building owner, or a property owner had approached the mayor about another location in the vicinity of Church Street, and I met with DPW, with Blue and Nick, at the Church Street location, and they were pretty clear that for any unpaved area to be turned into municipal parking, it would need to be paved. And that's expensive, and it needs to be maintained. So for any musicians in town, if you're looking to tune your instruments, it's a perfect C. And I'm wondering if that's the same tone as the tinnitus I've been developing in my ears since I've been coming to the board meetings. So for any unpaved space to be converted to municipal parking would need to be paved, which in one case would not be of interest to the property owner. In the other case, on Church Street, that lot would only yield eleven spaces, so that, that didn't pan out. But as we were standing on, on Church Street at the one location, I'm looking across the street at the property behind the Jewish congregation.
Right.
And that's their, their auxiliary lot.
Right.
And I have had a conversation with the treasurer of the Jewish congregation, and he, just speaking for himself, expressed an enthusiasm that he would take it to the board, their next board meeting. They expressed that rather than any sort of a rental agreement, they would more be interested in having that lot improved and maintained. So it sounds like that potentially is a win-win, and I just need to wait for them to have their board meeting and get back to us.
I, I got the impression that they're assessing something there, because the last time I walked through there, all of the areas that need to be patched have been spray-painted around them, so it looks like they're doing some sort of investigation.
Good, good. To be continued.
Okay, along the same topic, we have municipal parking spots available behind Village Hall, so those are currently filled up. There are twenty-seven spots. We rent them at ten bucks a month, and those are all full. So I was wondering, should we explore having some of the spots behind the building at Fifteen Platteville Ave, just with the same terms, also available for, for rent? The challenge with that is, that lot is used very differently. It's not used a great deal during the day, Monday through Friday, but in the evenings and weekends, it's used a great deal. So if someone were renting a spot, let's say, in the southern part of that parking lot, that would basically only be available to that monthly renter. Is this something we want to, to take a look at? Do we want to have ten more spots available to add to the twenty-seven that we already make available to the public to rent?
Well, we could make any additional spots available only on Monday through Friday to monthly renters. And I guess I should first ask the question before making the suggestion. I was making the assumption that, that most people who would rent those spots monthly would be people who would do their business between Monday through Friday, but that's probably not...
I think that's a reasonable assumption. Like, I know some of the, the business owners who rent from, from the village, they're, they're, they're business owners who don't live in the community, so they're not here during the weekends. But, but then what does that mean, when they're not here? Or you're, you're, you're saying we would only make the spot available Monday through Friday as a rental? Then from six P.M. Friday through Sunday night? I see. That might be a way to do it.
Take, take this, take back the spots when they're not being used during the weekdays and return to the community during the weekends when they're busy.
So basically have this, this new category of, of spot available for rent. You can rent a spot that's only Monday through Friday, essentially. Okay, what, is there a demand for additional spots? I know we're full, but are people coming? We're sold out, and I believe there is demand. Yeah, I, I think people, Katie, do you have any sense of that from what you hear?
I do, and recently, there's been some changes in some of the parking on Main Street, and, and when those changes happened, there were several people who rushed in to, to take the last of them. There are several people who are planning to race in on the summer first when we open the calendar for 2016. And the other thing that we can see what we do is, is if you offer Monday through Friday parking in the, behind Fifteen Platteville Ave, and if somebody needs to park their Saturday and Sunday, you could consider letting them park in the employee parking area behind Village Hall, because we're not occupying those spots Saturdays on Saturday. Or, or not penalizing them for using those spots if they have one of their...
I don't want to, I don't want to come, I don't want to have like an overly complicated parking offering either. I think offering something that's Monday through Friday might, you know, that, that might be a good, a good option.
It just takes, I think it takes a, a pretty good, single or, or two signs bracketing whatever the area is, just saying, these spaces are reserved during these hours.
I like that. And also, some of the twenty-seven spots that are currently rented may only want Monday to Friday from nine to five, so that may open up more full-time spots out of the twenty-seven for anyone that's looking for different needs.
Possible.
What are we thinking about price-wise? Because at ten bucks a month, I, I don't think we're even covering costs.
That's not enough.
So are we also renting these spots at ten dollars a month, or are we renting these Monday through Friday spots at eight dollars a month?
I don't think ten bucks a month is enough.
But it's what we currently rent.
I know that, I know that, but I don't think it's enough.
Katie, you mentioned the new calendar for the spots is in December, you said?
December first, well, in the Town Hall, I will, I will tell you that historically, there's been a lot of pushback, that, that, that this room has been filled with people stating that a hundred and twenty dollars a year is too much money for the...
Yes, that's true.
I'm just...
I remember that, I remember that...
You're just saying it's been, it's been made.
I remember that discussion well, and there, there was response to that, though. I believe, maybe even you, at some point said that that calculates out to, you know, pennies.
I think it was twenty-seven, twenty-seven cents a day, right?
Twenty-seven cents a day. Penny is a day. I do not believe that we're overcharging for those spaces.
Right.
And I, and I know that I'm on public TV now.
I think one of the things that also came...
I think one of the things that also came out of some of those discussions was, um, the fact that a, um, potential renter did not have to pay the entire, um, year all at once. So say if there was an employee of a downtown business, they could pay, say, in, in three month increments, so that it wouldn't be as, um, a one-time hardship.
We actually sent them in, yes, two, I think six-month increments.
Okay.
So you have to pay sixty dollars?
You would pay sixty dollars. You can buy them in, in two-six-month increments, uh, for a, one whole, or a hundred.
So it's like eight dollars.
And it wasn't that much, very difficult for me.
Eight dollars?
Yeah.
I, I think what we should do is, um, make the new spots available at ten dollars a month for Monday through Friday. I haven't thought through on the hours yet. And then come Jan. one, change the other spots that are seven days a week to twelve dollars a month.
The exact numbers that I had in my head without any justification for them.
I, that's really funny. I was also thinking along the same lines, also because, um, the Monday through Friday restriction would actually be opening up more desirable spaces than we do have here at Village Hall. Um, it's not a, that great of a distance in terms of a walk, but you're that much closer to Main Street than most of the businesses.
So we're gonna, we're gonna, and I'm just still thinking this through. So we, we have ten spots and we have signs up that say, "Parking by permit only." And that's in the lot behind Fifteen Platico. And then we could put the hours, let's say, nine A M. Monday through, um, six P M. Friday, or, or eight A M.
Eight A M.
Eight A M. Monday through six P M. Friday, for ten bucks a month behind ten spots, just to, just to, just to start. And then come Jan., we'll increase the price of the spots behind Village Hall to twelve dollars, since those are.
December first.
Is it December first or Jan. first?
Well, we're gonna open the door, and we'll open it on December first, fourth, January first.
Okay.
You make the motion and we'll.
Okay.
But at least tonight, do you wanna move forward with ten spots?
Um.
Ten bucks a month, eight A M. Monday, six P M. Friday.
I, I would prefer that it appeared to us as a resolution on the next, um, agenda. I, I just, I have voted no when something appears on the agenda as a discussion item, because without knowing in advance that I'm going to vote on something, I'm not comfortable with that. So I, I would prefer to see it as a resolution on the next agenda, also because at that point, um, enough of the public will be aware of it if there is further public comment on the topic.
Yeah, that's fine. So I, I think all we're doing here is just outlining the terms.
Yes.
And then we'll, we'll make it official, or we'll vote to make it official next Wednesday.
So you're not saying Monday through Friday from eight to six? It's Monday at eight A M. through Friday at six P M. I just wanna make sure that's clear. So those spots are rented overnight.
Yes.
Each weeknight. Okay.
Makes it simpler. I don't know if it's best, but it's simpler. And it's simpler for people to understand.
Simple is good.
Simple is good.
Yeah, if you have someone who's parked there in the evening, they would have to get their car there by eight A M. or be towed and.
Right, right. Simple is good. I agree. Okay.
Perfect.
Okay, next topic is related to the proposed Town and Village Master Plan Committee. So this is an ongoing topic. The previous administration and town board have tried to do this before. We would not be, I'm not looking for a new resolution. I'm just looking to refer to the existing resolutions from at some point in two thousand thirteen or fourteen, as well as earlier this year.
February twenty-six, two thousand fifteen, there was a joint town and village meeting at which there was a vote to do a joint, uh, a joint comprehensive plan.
So I've been working with Marty Erwin from the, the town on this idea of how do we create a working group for a master plan, uh, to develop a master plan? And we've been talking to, um, Peter Fairweather, a community member, and, uh, an individual with, with planning, with a planning background. And the, the general thinking right now is create a nine-person committee of town and village folks, not being overly mindful about whose town and whose village, just nine good people who care about Newpaltz. And the idea is that this working group would create an RFP to go to market and hire a third-party consultant that would help us draft a joint town and village master plan. The thinking is this project should take no longer than approximately twelve months. And this committee would continue to exist during that twelve-month period. They would meet with a third-party consultant periodically, report back to the town and village boards, and so this committee would have a finite life. We were also thinking about the idea of this working group being nine individuals, but then there would also be kind of a larger group, um, to include some other stakeholders, like, let's say, an individual from the college. And, you know, it's, it's, we can all sit here and come up with so many other stakeholders that need to be aware of these types of projects. So I think we need to find a balance between having a working group that can get stuff done, but then also having a larger group that's aware of what we're doing, so we have adequate community support when it comes time to adopt a plan and then spend money on implementing some of those plans, like ch- changing both town and village codes to reflect that plan. So I'd like to share with you some individual names of, of people for this nine-person town and village committee. So, um, one member would be from the town planning board, to be named village planning board. Michael Zier, Zealer has expressed interest. Um, we'd also like to have, um, a representative from Huguenot Street, because they are also working on their own master plan. So I've spoken with the, um, the president, the chairman of their, the chairperson of their, um, the Huguenot Street Society, Marietta Schneider, about, um, just making sure we're aware of what they're doing and, you know, maybe we can kind of, uh, share resources. Another individual would be Bob Hughes, kind of taking on an environmental perspective, having a knowledge of historical environmental studies that have been done in Newpaltz as it relates to wetlands. Um, Gail Gallery, the, uh, a person with transportation implementation perspective. Fran Wischnik, um, Bill Murray, he's a resident on Prospect Street. We recently appointed him to be an alternate to our planning board. Rich Gottlieb, um, as kind of like the downtown business person, and Peter Fairweather. So that's nine individuals, um, who would function as the voting members of that board. And Don and I have learned how important it is to have an odd number of people on a committee, 'cause we're currently, um, witnessing a committee that has four people and they're currently split two to two on the topic.
And they've been split two to two on the topic for three straight meetings.
Yes. So that's kind of the, the rough i- idea of, of both individuals and concepts. I wanted to get your feedback.
I was gonna make the point before you, uh, got into specifics. I'm glad that, um, I can still say this and not, not, you know, not be certain I'm, I'm appearing to, uh, be in favor of or opposed to any individuals. I, I do think that it's important to have, uh, roughly, rough parity between town and village, um, residents on, on such a, a committee. I fully embrace the concept that villagers are all members of the town. I, I probably get that. But if you take a look at Main Street, when you come off the thruway, we do have different personalities, if you will. Um, the town is mostly owners. Uh, the town has a Burger King and a McDonald's and, 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 and national chains. Uh, the village is very much dominated by a lot of renters. We have, uh, we have forbidden national chains, so there are differences.
We have.
Well, we've been talking about it.
We have not.
Yeah, you understand, whatever the term of, um, the point is, is that, that, um, communities, municipalities have different personalities and values, just like people. So I'd wanna make sure that, that the town's personality and values were equally represented, but I also wanna make sure the village's were. Lot of words to say a simple thing. I'm sorry. But it seems like that's, that's what's, that's where you're, where you're going with this. But you initially said that that wasn't a priority, and I wanted to.
See, I, I, I kind of, I feel differently. I would really like to move away from counting town versus village heads and like, you're representing the town and you're representing the village. 'Cause the, the people on, that I, that I think Marty and I have identified are really just Newpaltz people who, um, are, are mindful of what makes sense for our, our community broadly, whether it's town and village. And I think town people cherish the village, and I think village people cherish the town. And, um, I, I, I would love to see less of this delineation. But by the same token, I think if anyone was concerned, like, is this just a committee of, of village residents? No, it's not. It's a committee of, of town and village residents.
I think I would generally agree with you, but I'm pleased that you have in your suggestions included specifically one member of the village planning board and one member of the town planning board. So there's that, uh, uh, both collaboration and differentiation. I, I know that, uh, our planning board has expressed keen interest in having a direct role in the, uh, comprehensive planning process. And I think that Michael Zierler is an ideal candidate to do that.
It all sounds good to me.
Thanks.
Any other, okay, good with, with that update? So does anybody wanna comment on trees that were cleared near the Vaca's Restaurant? This has been a.
Well, I know what happened, but, uh, you know, I, I thought we had already had some address.
Well, I, uh, I was at the last Shade Tree Commission meeting, and, uh, this was a topic of conversation. And the owner of the property was, uh, was present to that meeting and, and expressed willingness to, uh, work with whatever recommendation the Shade Tree Commission had in terms of, you know, what do you want me to plant, where do you want me to plant it? Uh, there are multiple potential plans in place for that property. I think there's Plan A, B, C, and D in terms of what would happen going forward, how it would be developed. There's a whole bunch of different options. At least we're discussing with the Shade Tree Commission. And depending on what the planning board allows it's friendly to, that will determine what can be planted and where. But, um, I think there, at least at the meeting I attended, there seemed to be a, a good level of communication and understanding and willingness to, uh, work together between the property owner and, and the Shade Tree Commission. So it's, it was a bad, you know, difficult situation, but I, I think from what I saw, people are moving forward as positively as, uh, as is, uh, as can be done.
Okay, next topic, um, meeting times and our evening meeting policy.
Yeah, I had brought this up 'cause I, I, um, was not sure if there was a policy in place. I know there had been discussion in the town that it's such a policy. I don't know if that's true or not, 'cause I'm not a member of the town council. But I, I think meetings of boards, commissions, and, and this body, um, I would like to see a, a, a policy established where, uh, in every case, they take place, uh, after six P M. And I think, um, that is for a couple of reasons. Number one, uh, for members of the public who may want to attend the meetings, um, that's paramount. I think number two, there was, um, let's see, there was a, a, a board or a commissioner or committee, committee or a gathering, um, that, um, was meeting during the day, and there was some concern expressed that, um, by a, a person who had a nine to five, that these daytime meetings were, were, um, a burden. And someone from the peanut gallery, no one here, someone from the peanut gallery said, "Well, maybe you're just the wrong person to send this committee." And I, I, I think to have, you know, meetings during the day, um, it puts a burden and really reduces the pool of people who could serve, or who would want to serve or be able to serve. So I, I think, um, this board and any of our committees and, and commissions should meet during the evening when the public have, and the greatest number of people in the public have a chance to attend.
I'm, I'm in full support of that. I think, uh, the meeting that we had a week and a half ago was a, was a great example of an exception and why we needed to have that meeting during the day, because we were waiting for a response from the county planning board. And then we were dealing with a timeframe, because our planner was going to take, hopefully after our board acted, was going to take the very next morning, um, a drive up to Albany to, to, to present our law change to the Department of State. So we basically needed a date time meeting to occur to adopt the new law, if there were any issues, to float it by our attorney, and then by end of business, to put that in the hands of our village planner, who was driving it up to Albany. So, you know, sometimes you need to have meetings during the day. I completely agree that for the sake of, of transparency and scheduling, you know, ninety-nine meetings out of a hundred take place as scheduled during the evenings. But we just need flexibility for, for special situations.
Absolutely. And, you know, part of my concern would be, you know, with a limited amount of time in the middle of the day to get to a meeting before having to get back to my full-time employer and their demands, if a discussion goes on beyond the amount of time that I have, I would have to just leave. And I would not want to neglect my village duties. I would like to fully flesh out issues. And that meeting that took place at two o'clock in the afternoon, if the planner needed to drive it up the next day, I don't see why that couldn't have been a five P M. meeting. So, and, and I definitely understand your point. There are times where maybe a special meeting or a special emergency or a situation dictates an afternoon meeting, but I think it should absolutely be the exception to the rule, and I would like to see a policy in place.
And I think we have the two-meeting rule here, but, but it's not engraved in stone. If we have something that needs to be decided on that evening, we just vote to waive the two-meeting rule.
Exactly.
I think, you know, I think there's always that. I would volunteer to throw up some, some draft language we can look at for the next meeting. I think it would, it would meet Tim's concerns, uh, certainly, you know, be mindful of that. Be happy to just write up some language and throw it out there for people to look at. Or would you rather have the attorney do it?
No, not at all.
Yeah, it seems like a pretty good.
I, I, I really don't think we need this policy. I think, I think spending time and energy on a policy like this, when we all agree that we, um, need to have meetings during the day, or during the evenings, um, I don't, I don't understand why we're, we're making a change.
Well, I'm willing to spend the time and energy and it'll be easy, though.
If, if we all agree and it's not a situation in the future, then let's just move on.
Don, you had another item on this agenda. You're interested in a press release about, um, viewing village meetings. I'm completely supportive of someone drafting a, uh, an explanation about how the public view meetings, whether it's on the website or Channel twenty-three, and, you know, just making sure it's very clear when the meetings air, why they air, how they air. Sounds good to me.
Is that what you have in mind?
Yeah, we, well, I, I guess, um, we had, there were some, a couple of changes made over the course of the past month or two, and, um, we never really, when things were all settled, never really put out the press release to tell people about it. So that's, that's, that's all I was looking to do.
Yeah, fine. Good.
Do you want to draft it and then send it, right? I'll, I'll certainly take a look at it.
Yeah, no problem. You should, you better.
Okay, so jumping ahead to item ten, consideration of changing the section of Elting and Innis Avenue between Hasbrook F. and Route thirty, oh, I'm sorry, Route two oh eight near the Mountain Laurel School into a one-way that heads north and then west. Does anyone have any feedback or thoughts from Planner David Gilmore's memo? Any concerns about this concept?
Well, I've already expressed my, my minor concern, 'cause I use that going the other way. So I have a minor concern, and I, I went and I deliberately used. So I have a minor concern and I, I went and I deliberately used it twice since then. And, uh, I had no difficulty driving up. There were no children around either time. So there was no danger of unwittingly hitting any child dashing out in the street from the school. And nor have I ever seen any danger of that, never, not once in any time that I've driven on that street. So I think that this is, maybe it's a nice thing to do. I don't see it as necessary.
I think it could be very useful because I see the cars that are on two oh eight queuing to go up the hill, up Innis, making a right onto Innis. You know, when they're going north on two oh eight, they, they queue to make a right onto Innis. And I think if they were queuing up Elting and then making a left onto Innis to pick up their kids, then that queue would take place on both Innis and Elting as opposed to on two oh eight. And there's no magic bullet to help with congestion on two oh eight. But this might be one small way to alleviate some of the congestion on that street, particularly around sensitive times of day like when students are being picked up at school. And I also floated this idea by the executive director of Mountain Laurel. And she said she thought it was a great idea because they would love to have just only a one-way because the kids go between the Mountain Laurel School and the building that they own across the street and the playground that they own across the street.
The one thing, you know, out of the report that I appreciated seeing was the, um, essentially the accident rate report, which, um, I didn't expect to be, it's not, you know, exorbitant, but I didn't expect it to be as high as it is. So with that, I would support this, um, if it's going to reduce the amount of accidents that happen there, which I imagine it would.
I think the fact that the leadership of the, of the school is enthusiastic and supportive, that, yeah, that between that and the planner's, uh, report, I'm, I'm certainly in favor of this.
Well, actually, the, I mean, the, the planner is kind of almost neutral on this idea. So David and I have had a few conversations about the idea and, you know, I, I like the idea. He's kind of neutral on it, um, but just wanted to see where your heads were at before we continue to look at it.
One other question. Is there any concern about the number of cars making a left turn going onto two oh eight off of this small street? How many, how many more cars will be making a left turn onto two oh eight as a result of this change? That I think would be a problem. And by the way, the issue of back, cars backing on two oh eight, I believe, has nothing to do with the school because on Saturday and Sunday, you can find huge lines of cars because our light on the corner of Chestnut and Main is an exorbitantly long and difficult light and it backs up traffic whenever there is a lot of traffic.
I think you're, you're not fully understanding the point that I'm making about the queue. The queue that goes north on two oh eight, it actually is angled. So the cars, they sit and they, they block the.
I did hear, I did hear that. Uh, I'm just suggesting to you that you might fix that problem that occurs at certain times of the day and create another problem of people making a left turn onto two oh eight as they pull out of that small street. How many people are going to be going not easily to the right towards Main Street, but are going to be going south on two oh eight?
Aren't they already doing that now?
Some of them are doing it, but many of them may be going in the other direction and doing it down Hasbrook as well as down Innis.
Right. I, I, I know what you're saying.
We're reducing, we're reducing the options that people have to leave the area to one.
We're reducing options.
And we're forcing them all onto two oh eight. So as the mayor said, there is no magic bullet, but I'm fearful of the.
I don't think there's a magic bullet.
I'm fearful of what's going to happen if we do this.
So we don't like this idea?
I've seen when the traffic is backed up on two oh eight at the red light. I mean, unless you have a jerk, which sometimes happens, people will leave a space for people to make that left-hand turn while they're stopping to light. And if they won't, someone will beep their horn and say, please make a space for me. But, um, it's a, it's a, you know, but I'm not minimizing the, uh, the issue. I think that, and I recall the planner did cite that in his report too, as, as one of his concerns. I, I, uh, nice, nice to try it for, for a month, but that doesn't work in municipal decision-making.
Right.
Yeah, I, I, I said that, I know.
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm not crazy about this, but I'm certainly not going to, uh, be an obstacle to its implementation. But I would sure like to see our study done on the traffic pattern after its implementation.
Well, I think we were going to get some additional car counting.
Right.
I'd like that David had mentioned that there was an option to do some of that. So we can maybe get some additional data because we were looking at some of the data. We're kind of scratching our heads a little bit to even confirm that it was exactly the data that we wanted. I think some of the, the tables were mislabeled, but.
It also, yeah.
Yeah, I think if someone took a look at that space during the hour where school let out and saw how many cars go that way and how many cars go that way, that'd be good information to have. Then we know how many cars are all going in one way.
Right. Cause if we're forcing them all to two oh eight, we could be making a worse problem than we currently have.
Well, let's cancel courses and talk about it tomorrow.
Yeah, um, wow. Maybe we could have, um, Myra Franch, our, um, part-time parking attendee, might be a good project for her to do, I think. She's very mindful and, uh, I think it's something that she would be interested in doing.
Okay, then we're gonna, uh, put that on a comeback list?
Yeah, let's make it a comeback.
Yeah.
Tim, before we move on, uh, I just want to make it clear, um, that I did state that the, uh, there had been no discussion by the Jewish congregation of Newpalt's with regard to any parking issues. That, um, uh, they had not discussed that and I did not suggest they had discussed that. That will be an item for them to discuss in the future and, uh, just want to make sure I'm clear on that.
We had another item regarding the discussion of changes within the B two. I've spoken with the planner, Michael Zierler, about this. He's, he's mentioned his concerns about our B two district. That's our business district, the most liberal district as far as, um, what can be constructed in the village, and what is permitted. That, that might, I, I feel like fall under what we should be looking at regarding broader master planning. That's not necessarily a, a near-term discussion. It could be a near-term discussion if there was, um, a project like this proposed hotel that is before us. But as of right now, I've heard no new information from that project. So I, I don't feel compelled to, um, to take a deeper dive on, on any changes we might consider for the B two unless anyone else has thoughts. Nope?
No, I don't have any.
So, uh, the adoption of our proposed N B R. So one, uh, one of the, the feedback, um, points that we received from the county had to do with, um, something that I feel our committee who worked on rewriting this, the, the language for this zone was pretty mindful of. And the way it stands now is essentially everything is a special use as opposed to having a permitted use and then some special uses. A lot of this kind of felt like, uh, legal interpretations of, of how a project should be viewed and reviewed from the planning board table. But if we are going to move forward, um, as I'm anticipating we will next week so we can finally adopt this zoning change for the N B R and then end the moratorium for the N B R, we would just need a super majority amongst our board that we're, we're fine adopting the text as written and we're, we're recognizing that we've heard the, the suggestion by the, the county planning board. But, um, the, the point that I would like to emphasize is the, the, the idea that this is all special use permit was something that was discussed and vetted by George Rodenhausen, our planning board attorney, who also worked with us on this, this text as well as our own attorney and each of us. So the point is just that if we go ahead and adopt this next week, that we are mindful of. The county had brought this up as something to be thoughtful about.
I understood from, uh, I think it was Will's, uh, take on this that we had to have specific reasons why we did not adhere to the county's position. That, uh, even, we needed a, a super majority, but we also have to have a reason why we're not accepting those. Now, I suppose we could say our attorneys don't think we need to. But is, is that a reason?
I feel like, go ahead, go ahead.
I, well, I think, you know, I feel like, um, anything to give, um, extra oversight to a project is a good thing. And I, you know, I, I don't think, you know, the county looks at things one way and we're looking at it another way where, um, we want to be able to look at each project and not just have, you know, an easier approval process, but to actually, um, have some, everything be a special use because it's, it's, it's huge. And too often we've had, um, building projects get approved and COs, um, you know, granted, where we turn around and find out that the project turned out to be something completely, not completely different, but different enough and very often in violation of our actual existing code. So I think the extra oversight would more likely avoid those scenarios.
Devil's advocate, then why wouldn't you do that for every, every zoning district?
Well, we're doing it in this situation because it's a new district. It's a very sensitive new district. So, um, just because we're, we're taking the extra look doesn't mean that it's going to be unnecessarily arduous either. You know, I, I think what's important to notice here is that the, the county is saying, did you consider this?
Yeah.
And my response to that is, we absolutely consider that. And we, we sat at this very table, um, and spent a great deal of time considering the pros and cons of, of what they're asking us, uh, if we had considered. So it's not like they're bringing something to our attention that we had never thought of before. So I feel very comfortable, um, moving forward with doing what we're doing.
If our attorneys think it's okay, then I suppose I think it's okay.
Right, okay. So we're gonna, that, that's going to be, uh, hopefully discussed and voted on next Wednesday. Uh, next item, a consideration for our former planning board chair, Maurice Whiteman, in terms of recognizing Mr. Whiteman's service to our community.
Let me, uh, say a couple of things on that. The concept of, um, naming a portion of the, uh, of Route thirty-two was directly related to Maurice's work on the N B R zone. And I, I knew that as Maurice's zone, that's, that was his, you know, his, um, he was the driving force behind that. He put a lot of his, uh, a lot of his last year into making them do a reality. I was very appreciative and am responsive to some of the things I heard in public comment, uh, this evening. And I think one thing that hasn't happened that would really have to happen before we have too much of a conversation on this, that was my reaction as a, as a board member from what I, what I saw from, from this table and official business of the village. But I think, I think obviously someone would need to speak with the, with the family and see what their thoughts were. This was my thought, but, um, I certainly, their, their input would be, uh, important and, and appropriate. So, um, I am happy to make that contact. Tim, if you want to make the contact as, as the mayor, you know, I think someone needs to be in touch with the family and see if they are receptive to the concept. And if they are receptive to the concept, what they think they would like to see. So I'd like to move this, it's, move this topic to a, a further, a later meeting once that, uh, input has been received.
Okay, and I'll, I'll reach out to Celia and speak with her and get her thoughts on what the family would feel is appropriate. But, uh, and I'm, and I'll echo exactly what Don just said. Maurice truly was the driving force behind the, the N B R rezoning. And, you know, many people, um, in the community and past administrations have been, um, interested in getting that zoning updated and it was not an easy lift. And Maurice was very important to, uh, you know, get it to where it is today. And hopefully this, this latest version is the one that, that we'll be using for many years. Next topic, Village of Newpalt's commitment to the capital repair and maintenance of the pumping station equipment and water lines for the proposed water district on Plains Road. So this has to do with the, um, village's commitment to get the folks on Plains Road with the proposed water district number five comfortable that if there was a failure of their infrastructure, that they would not be left in the lurch, having to pay for everything. And the, um, the attorneys, um, both from the village side and the, the town side have been trying to identify a way that would get those, um, you know, have language that was, that was clear about if there was a, an infrastructure failure, how does it get paid for and, and who does the work? So we have currently a draft that, um, is near completion that was constructed by the village's water and sewer attorney, Dave Merzik, who is a real pleasure and incredibly smart guy who leaves no stone unturned for this village and, and fights really hard that anything that we, um, commit to as a village is protecting us in, in every possible scenario. But, uh, we'll have, you, you've all received, uh, the, the draft of that maintenance agreement. But, um, we should have a, a final draft shortly.
What do we need to do tonight?
Nothing. That, that was just really just an update. I think Don was asking just for, for, uh, comment on it from the table.
Yeah, I guess my specific comment was, um, as I understood it, you wrote the memo, uh, the cost of maintenance would be borne, um, in part or largely by the village. And that was my, that was my question.
Well, I, I saw that because I went and looked at the text and, uh, in, in the first, uh, now there forepart, not in any of the whereas parts. Uh, any cost of extraordinary maintenance, including for example repairing or replacement of village-specific and/or major components of the town water system would be paid for by those. So not just any repairs.
Well, the major, major repairs are the ones that aren't major, yeah.
But village-specific or major repairs that would inhibit the village having access to the water supply. But this is a water supply for the village. I mean, this is for us. So it's granting that the town will own, you know, they'll own the pieces of, of structure. But we get the water at cost and it's in our benefit that, it's to our benefit that we have this ready at all times. The assumption is, given the nature of the equipment that, uh, would be installed here is that we have no reason not to expect this to last for many, many years. If you compare the current systems that we have, they last for many, many years. It's not impossible that something would. It's not impossible that something would be wrong with some system. If it's village-specific, then we would pay for it. If it inhibits our having access to water from a major issue, we would pay for it. All other, and those are detailed, all other maintenance and ordinary repairs would be taken care of by the town.
And I understand that, I guess, I understand that as making a lot of sense during the periods of shutdown, when the village is receiving their water there. But my concern was during the non-shutdown period, the long term, when the, when that infrastructure is bringing water primarily to Plains Road, why would the village be agreeing to take on major expenses for repair at the times when that system is not delivering water to the village?
Because this allows us to have a backup water system that's worth millions of dollars. Currently, like if we had no water tomorrow, we would have water for a few days. With this, with Plains Road having a water district, we would now have water for 10 weeks at a minimum.
At a minimum.
And then another 10 weeks, and then as the current plan calls for, or expectations, there would not, there'd be just those two shutdowns. So, we're talking about for the long term, that's-
Well, the point is, is, so, let's say this, this water district is online and all the repair syst, all the repairs are done to the, to the aqueduct, whether it's like three or five different 10-week repairs, once a year for the next three or five years. So, let's say year eight, there's a failure where we have no more water accessible from the aqueduct. So, at least we got 10 weeks of water down here. So, that's, that's a 10-week window to fix that problem. Whereas if we do not have this, or if this was today and the aqueduct went offline, we would have water for five days. Five days versus 10 weeks, that's what we're getting out of this. That's worth millions of dollars.
Well, my understanding, Don, is that, and I'm almost absolutely certain of this, although I did not go back and reread the original IMA, but my understanding is that the original IMA, which still prevails, says that this is in effect, not just for these 10-week periods, but during any future emergencies that would then interrupt the village's water supply. So, this system is going to be in place for us to use in case of any emergency that would cause a shortfall in our water supply.
But the whole discussion during, the whole discussions was that the well supplies, the available water was intended for just short periods and not for long, long periods.
Without question, without question. And during all of the interim periods, it would be providing water at a very low rate of flow for a very small body of users. So, the probability of overuse or failure or, you know, problems is unlikely, it's highly unlikely. This is a contingency in case something in the long run does go wrong, and it's in our best interest to have that contingency. It's our insurance policy.
I don't want to, I want to debate the whole thing again. Let me just state my position and move on.
Okay, sure.
I, I have had the public interpretation that there are aspects of this project that have not necessarily been in the, in my personal view, in the village's long-term financial interest. I am, I have some concern about the village committing to taking on major capital repair costs for infrastructure located in the town, period. We can move on. I'm gonna lose that vote for one, so let's move on.
Okay, fine.
Next?
Next.
Curfew for Halloween.
5:00 PM.
That would be the resolution that was added to your office on Friday.
Yeah.
I don't have that resolution.
It's a loophole, we're just-
Yes, it was just from today. It's in there someplace. You probably do have it in there someplace.
Can you, you would need, do you need to read it or no? Actually, you don't really need to.
Well, yeah, let's just go over the key.
Under 17.
Person's under the age of 17 to be or remain in or upon any street park, parking lot, or other public space within the village from the hour of 10:00 PM on the evening of Halloween until 6:00 AM on the morning of November 1st, unless such person is accompanied by his or her parent or guardian over the age of 21 or has written authorization on their person.
How does this differ from prior years?
This is the, this is the exact same resolution that we've used for years.
So, we've done this year after year after year, and we've done it without incident? We haven't had any suits or any riots about this?
My kids weren't happy when they were, yes, less than 17, but that's the extent of the diversity.
Is it, is this really what hap, I mean, I have a problem with laws that are not enforceable? Like, are there kids who are out past 10:00 PM who are younger than 17?
Oh, shit.
Oh, yes.
I would suggest.
I was not, when I was a child.
So, they're violating this resolution by doing that?
In one year, Kami and Deli was pelted with eggs, I mean, millions of eggs, and it was after 10 o'clock and, you know, the police wouldn't take action because of this.
And it's Saturday night.
I think it gives the police the ability to enforce if they see an issue, and I think if we're giving them the tool to do that, then, and as Tom mentioned, there's never been an issue in the past with this resolution.
At least I'm not aware of it.
It's deterrence.
It's a deterrent.
And I'm old enough, I can still go egg Don's house.
If we've done it every year and there hasn't been any issue, and then I suppose we could do it again.
Yeah, you know, I think, I understand when we first did this, I had trouble with the idea, and I know a number of parents who did, but that was the first time. I pretty much feel that most people that age or under 17 realize that it's not unreasonable for us to have this in place, given that it is a night of mischief. And also with this, in terms of the amount of people who come to New Paltz from out of town, the thousands who come to New Paltz from out of town for Halloween, this also gives the police another protection in terms of, we don't know who's, you know, you might recognize someone's kid doing something bad and, but if, you know, if it's kids from another town, you won't necessarily know their parents and what have you. So, with that, I like the leverage it gives to the police.
Is that the way it works, it gives the police leverage? So, without it, they, they couldn't necessarily shoot kids off the street?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, with a curfew, you can shoot kids off the street for being on the street. Without a curfew, you have to have a, you have to catch them in the act of doing something. I'm, you know, I'm not agreeing with some of this. So, Tim, if you want to convince me to vote against it, very convincible. So, I'm explaining it, not necessarily defending it.
What do you think, Dennis?
I am okay with it. If you guys have a problem with it, I'm okay with moving on. I'm sure the police can deal with it appropriately. They're very effective. I would like given the extra tool, but if it's not in agreeance with the board, I'm not gonna argue with it then.
Let's ask, let's ask the police what they think, and then we can act on it, we can act on it on Wednesday.
Yeah, that's right.
Okay. I'm actually curious now what the police, do they, do they appreciate having this tool, or does it even, not even make a difference to that?
I volunteer to reach out to the chief and I'll bring back what I found out.
Here's the cause.
All right. So, what else did we add to this agenda? Oh, DASNY. So, I'll give you an update on DASNY. So, I've been working with the New York Rising folks, you know, there's a few different projects that New York Rising has allocated money for in our community. So, the next big one would be the hardening of our sewage, sewage treatment plant and hopefully improving some of the inflow and infiltration, stormwater issues that we have, hopefully related to that culvert below Water Street, where Water Street intersects with the Walk Hill River. But, so when we used the county as our sub-recipient for the water line project, so with the new bridge that's going to be constructed, the new Carmine Liberta Bridge will involve the county as a sub-recipient of $400,000 of New York Rising money that was allocated to the town and the village, and another approximately $90,000 that was allocated to the village, that $90,000 is being used to update the water line. We currently have a water line that hangs off of the Carmine Liberta Bridge, so with the bridge replacement, we need a new water line that costs about another $90,000. But the challenge with getting money is not just, you know, receiving the money, but it's the administrative hurdles that we have to jump through, and being a sub-recipient is a, is a, is an involved process. So, our treasurer, who's equipped at handling lots of things, can do this, but when I explained to her that we were going to use the county as the sub-recipient for the water line fund, she was incredibly excited. And this potential project of hardening of our sewage treatment plant, which could cost approximately $1.2 million, we would use the New York State Dorm Authority as the sub-recipient and also as somewhat of a construction manager overseer. And this was at the recommendation of the, the project manager that we're working with from New York Rising. So, they were going to provide me with a resolution, just so our board was okay with the idea that we're using DASNY as the sub-recipient. I have not received that language yet, so we will get that language hopefully by our next meeting, but at least I won't need to re-explain it to you, so hopefully you guys have a rough idea of why we're doing what we're doing. Any questions?
I would just like to echo what you said, you know, I was at that meeting and the reporting responsibilities when you receive these monies is itself an extraordinary, extraordinary, it's ordinary but burdensome. It's a great burden to have to do all of reporting out, and our treasurer is immensely happy that she does not have to do that, and DASNY knows how to do that, and they have the full faith and confidence of New York Rising and I guess the governor's office. So, there's, and they do project management as well as this reporting. So, we have, I think, very good reason to do it and no good reason that I can think of not to do it, so I think we should do it.
Okay.
Sounds good to me.
All right. Next item, I think we were going to make an announcement that we're looking for individuals to volunteer on our bike ped committee representing the village. It's a village and town wide committee, and we were also going to recognize outgoing bike ped committee chairman, Bill Weinstein, who served as chair, or he was definitely on the committee for 10 years?
Yeah, he's been chair, I believe, for seven years. I believe that's accurate. I think that's the number that they mentioned at the last meeting. He's been on it for as long as anybody else on the committee could remember. And people uniformly said that he had done a great deal of, he had done a great job in leading that.
Yes, I would agree with that. Sir Visley is on and he is most certainly an effective chair and ran a very nice and tidy meeting, so, and I know the committee will regret not having him there. He did step down from the committee as well as from the chair, but we'll certainly still see him on his bicycle, though.
Right, and fortunately, we have Peter Kaufman, a sociology professor at the college, interested in stepping up to be, he's been a member of the committee for a time, and he is stepping up to take on the chair responsibility. So, thanks, Peter, and thanks, Bill.
Just an afterthought, I know we're pretty much done, but I would like to see us send a letter signed by the mayor from us to both Mr. Weinstein as well as Mr. Cockemo, thanking them for their service.
Oh, yeah, Mr. Cockemo's also-
Yeah, so Dave Cockemo has resigned from the zoning board of appeals, and I fully support Rebecca's suggestion that we, that we make David aware of our appreciation of his service. The motion.
Yeah, we'll do it as a motion?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And we are also looking for a new member for the environmental policy commission.
Well, that's right.
We have resignations.
Uh-huh.
All right.
Is that it?
I think we have the, we have, do we have to do the dump trucks?
Yes.
Oh.
So, our superintendent of public works is looking for the board's permission to sell two 2001 Dodge one-ton dump trucks with a minimum bid price of $3,500 for one and $2,500 for the other. Ellen, if you're interested?
I, I'd be waiting with these.
She wants both of them, see it in her eyes.
Both, so we'd be-
Her and Tom.
The silver one.
And we'd be waving our two meaning rule of this, which I'm fine with. Is there, I assume there's some sort of processes followed to figure out what the minimum prices would be?
I'm unaware of how Blue came to those minimum prices, but we could double check and report back. I think I'm interested, as you are, it seems to be.
I mean, is it a timely issue that they need this passed tonight? Can we ask the question and pass this next meeting?
Sure. I will always state that it was asked by the secretary of the department if I could put this before you for this evening. That's all I have to add.
Yeah, well, I'd be okay with making the, you know, with approving this and also asking the question so we know for the future. I trust this is-
Let's do it, let's do it that way. We'll find out if they do a blue book check or something like that.
Let me put that on the agenda for Wednesday.
Okay.
But we, we have a motion on the table, all in favor to approve the selling of the nine dump trucks.
Aye.
Was it seconded?
Yeah, I'll second it. No, I think-
I second.
All right.
Okay.
Use me.
All right.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
That's all right. So, you know, Mr. Weinstein was on that committee for eight or nine years. Damn, everyone's at every door.
Yeah.